Everybody raise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then Mr. Posey will lead us to the implication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
I would say, Father Lord, just thank you for those here tonight and thank you to this school system and everyone involved. Lord, please lead us, guide us, and protect us, especially in these times. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
At this time, we'll begin our December 7th, 2020 Board Meeting. The first item on the agenda is Consider Approval of November 2nd 2020 Board Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Mr. Tucker makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Ms. King makes a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries. The next item is Consider Approval of Agenda Per 1.403. Got several additions. One of them will be Mr. Steve Guntenberg wants to address the board in accordance with Policy 1.404. Item B will be Teacher of the Year recognition. B will be a bonus update. C will be a COVID update. Then we'll have a social media policy. We'll have a Capitol Project Committee. Then we'll have a COPE on an update of next step in the process. And the last one will be a technology update will be item H, because I think I got the alphabet. I've scratched on this so much, I've got it out of whack, but I think that'll be H will be the last one. Anybody else got anything they want to add? We'll have the facility use agreement will be added to item seven. It's not going to come under item three, but we do have one that has been added to considering. It'll be under item seven. Does anybody else got anything? Motion to approve.
No move.
Mr. Posey second, but Mr. Tucker if that's all right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. All right, the first item, Mr. Guntenberg as County Commissioner, if you will come forward to us.
Thank y'all for listening to what I have to say. It won't take but a minute. I'm a retired school teacher and I'm also the bus driver for the county too. And I see the problem every day that we're having at our schools. Franklin County, Huntsville or Alabama, Coffey County, Rutherford County, cars. Me and another gentleman have already turned in forty-something out-of-county cars just to Flintville. Now, if you were to go around to all the county schools, and I'd like to see y'all just take a few minutes in the afternoon in the car rider line, you'd be amazed. And according to Cole Bradford, we're losing thousands and thousands of dollars, people not paying their wheel tax. Sheriff can't enforce it. The county, our commission can't enforce it even though we have the law. But what good's the law if you can't enforce it? I pay my wheel tax and I've had a lot of people call me. I'm just a commissioner in District Seven. So I got up in front of the commission and addressed them on the problem and asked them to come up with some way that we could enforce this wheel tax money because it goes to education and roads. Well, there's enough lost at these schools every year to probably pay a big amount on what's owed them. So I just thought I would come. I don't want to take a whole lot of your time, but that's where I am and that's how I feel. And I was talking to Dr. Heath. I don't know if this would ever work or not. They send sheets out for registration. Send them home with kids to register, you know, at the schools. I think the parent ought to have to come and register the child at whatever county school they're putting them in and bring their car registration with them and say, "Okay." Don't bring the slip back with the kid. Well, they got friends and stuff in Franklin County. I can get a tag in Franklin County if I want, tomorrow. All I have to do is call one of my friends up there and say, "Hey, I'm going to give your address that I live up here and register my vehicle and I'll get a tag. It'll be sent to them and sent back to me," or it'll call me and I'll go get it, put it on my car and nobody's going to do a thing in the world about it. Sheriff won't. County Commission won't. So there I am. I'm in a dilemma. I tried to do my job and I was hoping everybody else to try to do theirs. Let's get stringent on this thing. I hate to see the money going down the drain. We're paying free education to these people that come out of a different county. They're using our schools, using our roads, and the taxpayers are paying the bill. So thank you for your time. I'll not take up any more of it, but think of some ideas if you can before school starts next fall. This has gone on too long. And I think Dr. Heath will be right behind me. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. Heath, maybe at a work session we may have a discussion with Cole to get concrete, maybe numbers of what it is and then the enforcement side of it from our perspective, if that will work.
Next item, of course, at this time of the year, we've always had a, after a board meeting, had a banquet for our Teachers of the Year. Unfortunately, with COVID, it has wrecked a lot of things. It has wrecked that for tonight, but we do want to know what a value it is to us to be able to recognize these teachers and we will do it at a later date. We're not going to forget about it when this COVID clears and when we can have that opportunity. We do want to recognize them and their spouse at an event similar like we've been doing in the past. The next item that I added is the bonus update. It did get confirmed that the votes were adequate at the previous meeting. Dr. Heath?
Yes, I did send an email out this afternoon to all our employees, basically going over that, over the logistics of the payment. It will be on a payroll, a separate payroll coming up at the middle part of the month. Because it is a separate payroll, there's a 22% IRS requirement to take out. It's about $50 more taken out by doing it this way than if it had been in a regular payroll. So by the delay, it did cost everybody about $50. That money will come back at tax time, but upfront, it'll be about a $50 less. And if my calculations...
Excuse me.
If my calculations are correct, somewhere around $325, $330 will be the net pay for most employees, it seems to be. But I sent that out to everyone today.
Are you picking up any of that feedback?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Haynes.
Sorry about that. The next is...
Ms. Haynes needs to mute herself.
Yeah. Ms. Haynes, if you will hit the mute button and then whenever we do a vote, just unmute. Thank you. Appreciate it. I didn't know if y'all could hear. I was getting it up here. Next item, Dr. Heath, give us a COVID update?
Yeah, you know, of course, COVID is spiking now worse than ever. I heard over the weekend, or maybe it was yesterday, that our active cases in our county is now over 300, 308, I think, which is the highest I believe it's been. In our schools this week and next week, Lincoln County High School is full virtual. We had to pivot to that basically on based on a number of cases going up within the school and some operational issues. Tomorrow, South Lincoln and Flintville will be returning. They'll be pivoting back to in-person. We will find out throughout the day tomorrow how that's going and if we can remain operational from now through Christmas break, which is nine days away. So we'll be monitoring very closely and in contact with our administrators every day to see where we are and if we need to make some adjustments because of operations or because of an outbreak in the schools. But the numbers are reported to the state today, which I do every Monday. They are the highest number of cases that we've reported in any week since the school year started.
Thank you. Next item is the social media policy. As the board has previously noted in times past, as the incident on social meeting of November 8th, Dr. Heath, the policy that applies to all employees is in regard to Social Media Policy 4.4061. School Board has one employee and that is the Director of Schools. The policy applies to this position, just as does any other employee of the system, in viewing the matter from the perspective of what would any action be taken, if any, to an employee given in a similar situation. The Board has no authority over employees other than the Director and our goal in the policy should be, this policy is equitable as it would be to any other employee. I do know in discussion with Dr. Heath, he regrets incidents deeply and he has deleted his Twitter account and it's been deactivated. As to any possible action, if any, it could be the recognition of matter tonight with the steps already taken. It could be the letter of reprimand or any other action that the Board would deem appropriate. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that letter of reprimand be written and signed by the Director Heath and placed in his personnel file.
Ms. King seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. That motion carries. Thank y'all. The next item is...
Mr. Chairman, who is writing that letter?
It would be drafted by Mr. Cagl.
Okay.
The next item is Capitol Project Committee that will be established in the coming year. I think you had an administration committee or administrative meeting with some that had been on with previous, correct?
I did, yes. And you should have this at your table. Just pack it here. That's the result of our administrative committee meeting. I know that you're going to appoint probably a board committee tonight, but I do want to go over this with you to let you know the work that we've done and a lot of time went into this in a one full-fledged meeting. But the first page, I hand up at the top right, handwritten, it says recurring. The things on the left column over there where it says item, all the way down that left column on all of these sheets would be the things that resulted from a survey that went out to every employee, every board member. I don't think we only had one board member respond, but we had about 250 employees respond. And so those things are all on here. In that first committee meeting, we did a prioritizing exercise. It says it over there on the right. It says the $100 exercise. So on this first page, when you look at these items, and these are recurring items, you'll see that the people who responded to the survey feel it's very important that we continue to fund our roofs, our parking lots, our HVAC systems in recurring dollars, so we don't get any further behind on any of those items. The ones that really didn't get that much support in the meeting are the first three things. Although they're important, they didn't, you know, bathrooms, recurring dollars for that, ceiling tiles and furniture, it didn't reach the level of those bottom three things. In red there, you'll see things that were eliminated after one level of prioritizing. Mowing crew, pressure washing buildings, painting buses and general painting. Not that those aren't important, but that those didn't reach the level of those other things up above it. Down in yellow on this page, recurring dollars, other funding, vehicles. Well, first of all, these things in yellow down there, those are things that can be funded through another source, not our Capitol Project dollars. Vehicles, buses, cafeteria equipment, copy machines and technology and computers. So those were all pretty important, but they weren't included in this exercise because they can be funded in a different way from a different fund. The column that says mentions, that's the number of times it was mentioned throughout the surveys. So that's the recurring one. Now, the next page, it says minor projects on it. So we did a whole different prioritizing exercise. So really, you can't compare the numbers on this one with the numbers on the previous one. But if you will look at this one, the thing that jumped out, the skid steer that Mr. Bryant has been asking about and talking about for years, reached the very top level there. Onings at a couple of schools also got quite a bit of attention. The other items received less attention and there were only, one, two, three, there were only six different main items on here. And eliminated after that round of prioritizing was the press box at Lincoln Central Academy, doing something with it, which is out there on the field behind us, and carpet at South Lincoln School. So that's the minor projects. The next two pages are all considered major projects. I did, we did combine items. So like the first one, two, three, four items are all about middle school football. The next item, next two items are about high school football. The next two are high school athletics. So it might be better to look at the second column and not the first column on this one because that second column sort of tells you what the group is. But when you look out at the right at the prioritizing exercise, what you'll see is that Highland Rim School received the most attention in the prioritizing exercise. The other things that received attention are South Lincoln School, bleachers at Lincoln County High School in the gymnasium, and the HVAC system at Unity. Those are the things that received the most attention and garnered the most attention during this exercise. I will say this, you know, these major projects, as the committee works, we'll find that these major projects are very difficult to fund just because of their scope. You know, just a rough calculation of what I heard a moment ago regarding Highland Rim. By the time we would have, if we had to borrow money and do the sharing that we're required to, you know, that could be a $35, $40 million project. You're not going to be able to find that in our current budget anywhere. But some of those other things, the HVAC at Unity, it would be a lot less and a lot more doable and maybe something we could do very quickly. South Lincoln, I'm not sure about the size of that project yet. I didn't put pen to paper on that. But the things that were eliminated after that first round as far as items of major projects, intercom systems at schools that needed it, renovation of this auditorium, the auditorium at Lincoln County High School, the attention that it needs, funding a large animal facility at the high school, working on doors and windows at the high school. Somebody had mentioned the possibility of building a new or two new middle schools in the county. That didn't get any traction on our prioritizing exercise. Storage buildings and outdoor lighting. So those things were all eliminated after the first round. So the committee, in my opinion, the things in red on these pages, the committee won't even have to worry about is the other things that you would look at and begin maybe doing some additional prioritizing and start looking at how to fund those things. So I wanted to go through that with you because I knew I'd be handing this information off to someone or to the committee as we can, so we can start the next step in this process.
Thank you, Dr. Heath. In light of that, the Capitol Committee that we'll appoint for the coming year will be Ms. Jennifer Haynes, Mr. Veronica King, Dr. Jimmy Daniel, Mr. Rex Dunn, Mr. Kevin Posey, Ms. Jennifer Turpin, Ms. Emily Pierce, Mr. Garth Garris, and a Mr. Ricky Bryant, and then a teacher from, since the building of the facility would be the next, a teacher from Highland Rim School that Dr. Heath and Mr. Garris would assign or appoint somebody from that school to that committee. The chair, we'll let the committee elect the chair when they meet, the first meeting. If that's all right?
Mm-hmm.
And I do, normally, we don't have that many board members on the committee, but we've run in instances in the past where we've had three and two unable to meet. So this way, we should be able to be covered and if not, it'll be public notice. Any board members can come anywhere.
Can you go down that list again? Let me make sure I don't miss anybody because there were several.
Uh, Ms. Jennifer Haynes, Ms. Veronica King, Dr. Jimmy Daniel, Mr. Rex Dunn, Mr. Kevin Posey, Ms. Jennifer Turpin, Ms. Emily Pierce, Mr. Garth Garris, Mr. Ricky Bryant, and then a Highland Rim teacher of y'all's selection. The next item added is COPE Architect in the next phase. And if you were here for the earlier part, Ms. Smith went over the next step would be a schematic where she can reach out to her folks they deal with from the engineering side, the civil side, on a approximate cost of going forward for the schematic. And if it be, somebody would entertain a motion to ask her to bring that, those figures back or email them back for our next meeting, if that's something we want to do and have them separated, one for the South Lincoln project and one from the Highland Rim project.
This is only for them to bring figures?
So we know what the cost of all that would be before we went forward.
No move.
Mr. Tucker makes a motion to incorporate COPE Architect to bring us back the figures at the next meeting.
Yeah, just figures. No calls alligated with this at all, right?
Right. Do I have a second?
I say a motion.
Mr. Dunn makes a second. I roll call me on this, please, ma'am.
Mr. Tucker.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Dunn.
Aye.
Dr. Daniel.
Aye.
Mrs. King. Mrs. Haynes. Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Eight and zero.
Eight and zero. Motion carries. If, Ms. Smith, we'd appreciate that. Thank you. And the last item on the added items to the agenda is Mr. Brad Luned. Just give us an update on our equipment piece of our technology of where we're at or lacking and anything in the COVID arena that going forward that's an issue or a problem or could be a problem.
Okay, well, the biggest problem with COVID right now is we can't get anything. You know, we ordered 1,800 Chromebooks in May and we thought we would have them by now. And every time I called, they push them back. It's going to be after the first of the year before we get our 1,800 Chromebooks. So it puts us in a little bit of a bind. We've got a lot of older Chromebooks. All these devices went home in these K8s for the first time this year. It's a struggle to keep these old devices up when they're breaking things or, and I'll tell you, one of the things we've seen in elementary schools in particular is if there's only one person that's handling those and it winds up being the librarian and they don't have adequate help, it really suffers. The Chromebook distribution and management of it inside the school is really difficult for that one person with everything else that's going on with this. So one of the things we may want to try to look into is if these devices are going to continue to go home in the next school year. I think we can make it through this year, but you know, they almost need some, some, the schools that have a aid dedicated to the library, their program works much better than the schools who are, the librarian is trying to juggle books and everything else and has no help. So there's a couple of schools we might could use some assistance somehow, whether we dedicate an aid to that or whatever. That's been our biggest challenges, probably. Home challenge with internet has been very difficult. We, we'll have some families, there'll be three Chromebooks go home, two of them get on fine, and one of them, no matter what device we send home, we can't get it on. And we can't go to the home and troubleshoot it. There's so many different various wireless providers and things out there. We do the best we can over the phone. So we've helped several families figure out some issues over the phone. That's been a very big challenge for us. But for the most part, I'd say another, one of the biggest challenges we've had is we requested for power adapters for the Chromebooks to never come to school. That has not held up and parents are, and I don't know that the schools are not saying, "No, bring your power charger to school." And they're losing the power chargers. And you know, we hate to spend a fortune on old technology that's really needs to be obsoleted right now. And so we're running thin on power chargers. Honestly, I probably couldn't get them even if I ordered them today anyway. So it's a challenge. We need this new equipment, but we're not unique. There's many school systems out there that are in the same shape as far as that goes. So that's our number one need right now is we just need the equipment in. And coming up in this next school year, we have another lease of 400 devices that are up in June. And so probably we need to go ahead and at the next board meeting, I'll probably need to get a bit out and start that process sooner. Normally, we wait till April or May to do that, but we probably need to get the things ordered today so we can get in the queue and we'll just, it's a gambit whether we'll get it or not on that, so.
Well, that's the reason I brought, added that tonight, so we know where the stresses are. I mean, there's stresses everywhere. And I'm not just saying that to, but Mr. Luned and his staff, I don't have any complaint, any issues. They do their day in and do their job just like Mr. Bryant and his crew and they go on. But that need and that's the reason I wanted that so people can know the need when we look at the budget to go ahead and order early, if that's what we need to do.
Yes.
I think that does best for our students and everybody involved.
And they'll work with us on timing and everything. If they say the stock's going to come in and inventory come up, we can execute that lease at any time. It really doesn't take effect until we actually receive the equipment anyway on those leases. So that'll help. And unfortunately, the kindergarten, the only grade that doesn't have really 100% coverage of Chromebooks is kindergarten. We ordered those in July and I don't expect them before March or April at the earliest, so.
All right. I appreciate it.
Any questions?
Anybody got anything?
That, one question, Brad, or one thing I want to make sure you make clear. If we have to go full virtual in the future, kindergarten is the only grade level...
Kindergarten is the only grade level that does not have one-to-one devices at this point. Yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Posey, any policy to that?
Yes, sir.
No policy net that brings us to item five is discussion consideration plans for Lincoln County High School football field. Dr. Heath?
Yes, I think Coach Rose is here. Mr. Owens is here. I'm not sure who's taking the, who's taking the mic first, but I'll turn it over to those guys to make the presentation.
Hello. I hope you can hear me. It's difficult to hear down here. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to present tonight. I want to make a couple of points. Just going forward, obviously, I don't think the timing's great to fund a turf football field for next year because of the coronavirus and the situation we're in. But what we do want to do is have a plan moving forward to invest in our football program and to invest in our football field. The reason we want to go with a turf field is because recovery time is not an issue at all. We want to be able to practice and play as many games in as many sports as we can on an everyday basis and use that time to be able to build revenue through 7-on-7 tournaments, travel baseball tournaments, soccer tournaments, football camps, middle school football games, varsity football games, JV football games. It's a facility that could be used literally every day, 365 days a year. There's basically no maintenance, no wasted man-hours. Obviously, the curb appeal, if you were fortunate enough to go to our playoff game at Beach High School, I thought their facility was absolutely beautiful. And those kind of facilities recruit good players and good families and baseball players and basketball players and get them in the football program. I think player development can be accelerated through having a turf field. You know, if you look nationwide where your best players come from, they come from Florida and they come from California and they come from good weather states. Well, when you have a turf field, what you do is you give yourself more practice opportunities because you don't lose days to bad weather, bad fields, wet fields, et cetera. because you don't lose days to bad weather, bad fields, wet fields, et cetera. I mean, unless it's, you're in the middle of a lightning storm, you can literally practice 365 days a year or use it for training. And what I would like to see happen moving forward is we would like to see, get a line item in the budget. In other words, if we meet again this time next year to see where we are, that now we've got a line item in the budget for whatever number that is, $35,000 a year, where we can say when we go to people in Lincoln County and ask for private donations, you know, we don't have nothing, we, we, we've started here. We've got a line item in the budget moving forward. We're putting $35,000 a year in that line item. You know, our goal as a football program is to raise $350,000 and we're hopeful that through the school board's donations that we can kinda meet in the middle and at some point down the road, whether it be this time next year or two years from now, that we can move forward on this. Uh, a couple of other things I wanted to point out, the Falcon Football Facility upgrades, if you'll look at the folder you have, you should have a list of the things that we've done since February 1st and, and I list these just to show you what we're trying to do as a program. I think there are 22 different things listed there and it doesn't include, we just put in $15,000 worth of new weight equipment this week. You know, we're doing everything in our power to move this football program forward and we need not only your help, but, you know, everybody in Lincoln County. We want this to be a, a community and a county project and a county program. If you'll look at the next, uh, testimonial, this is from the head football coach at Beach High School. And after we played them, I just said, "Hey, would you be kind enough to send me an email just telling me kinda, you know, what your thoughts are on the benefits of having a turf field?" And I'm not gonna go through and read the entire letter, but he made the point that it was the best facility upgrade that they had ever done in the 16 years he'd been at Beach High School. He also pointed out that they played on it Monday night, Tuesday night, Thursday night, Friday night, and all day Saturday, and that they had not missed one game. They didn't have to reschedule one game the entire season for as long as he'd been there and they only missed one practice the entire season. And he, as you could see, you know, they had, uh, was it four different logos they had in the field, you know, where they had sold those logos to local businesses? Now, would we do that going forward? I don't know, but that's an option, you know? If the Bank of Lincoln County wanted to go in at a certain dollar amount, you can literally put that logo in the field. On the turf testimonials, a couple of other things I wanted to include in that. For example, Mars Hill Bible School, who very good friend of mine's the head coach of there, they just won the state championship for the second time in the last three years and have played for it three years in a row. Now, if you'll look back at Mars Hill six years ago, they didn't even have a football program, okay? But the first thing they did is they put in a turf game field and now they have the best high school football program in their classification in the state of Alabama. Uh, Thompson High School, if you saw them last week, they won the 7A State Championship for the second year in a row and they've played for it three years in a row. Six years ago, Thompson High School was 0-10. They got a new superintendent, they put in a new turf field, they put in a new indoor facility, and now they're the most dominant team in the state of Alabama in the highest classification. So I guess the point I'm trying to make, if we wanna be a premier football program, we've gotta invest in it. You know, you can look at, I think Alabama's the best example in the world. You know, over the last 10 years, they've been the most dominant program in college football. You could certainly make that argument. And a lot of the time you hear Nick Saban, Nick Saban, Nick Saban, and Nick Saban's a great football coach, but if you'll remember when they hired Nick Saban, they'd had 20 years of, they didn't do very well. And the first thing they did when they hired Nick Saban was they tripled the recruiting budget. They put $70 million in athletic facility upgrades and they totally redid Bryant-Denny Stadium. And over the next 10 years, they've been dominant. Now, if you look at Vanderbilt, they have not made investments in their programs and over the past 40 years, they've had some very good football coaches that didn't do very well. And that's just a repeating cycle. So moving forward, again, what we're trying to do is make an investment in our program where our kids and our coaches and our community and our county has something to be proud of. Uh, natural grass, there's a quote in there, if you'll look, from Oxford High School, and this is from the same company that quoted the field here, and this is the lowest number. The number they had for totally redoing their natural grass field at Oxford High School is $410,000. The quote that we got, the turf quote that we got from the same company, which you should also have, is $707,000 and that is from Warner's Athletic Construction.
Okay, does anybody have a question on any of that information? I was gonna just, I just wanted to run through that before I did the PowerPoint real quick. Any questions? Okay. If you'll look right here, synthetic turf fields, benefits and cost. Okay. Point one here is cost-effective. If you look into turf fields, they're gonna be a little more expensive than a grass field over the first 10 years. The second time you do it, you're gonna save about a half a million dollars. Uh, the maintenance costs on a grass field typically is $45,000, $50,000 a year. It could go as high as $75,000. At Lincoln County High School, it's probably about $45,000. You look at $26,000 for water, $10,000 for paint, uh, sand, gas, oil, lawnmower, lawnmower repair, paying someone to cut it, et cetera. You easily get to that $45,000 per year number, which again, over 10 years would be 450 grand. Uh, versatility, you can literally do anything on the turf field, any sport. Uh, when I was at Bob Jones, we would have adaptive PE, we would have ROTC, regular PE, girls soccer, boys soccer, boys football, boys baseball, girls softball. Uh, there wasn't a, a group on campus that didn't use it. Maintenance, again, there's basically no maintenance on a turf field. You sweep it one time a month. Potential revenue generation, there are a thousand different ways you can generate revenue through usage fees, through renting it out, through having tournaments, through, you know, concession stands at your tournament, 7-on-7, middle, we made at least $10,000 this year just on the middle school concession stand games, you know? Uh, benefits of turf, again, cost-effective compared to grass. Turf offers a less expensive cost on a per-use basis. Typical grass sports field can use about 500,000 to a million gallons of water each year. Carrier and maintenance costs are almost completely eliminated. Student athlete safety, turf fields result in fewer injuries. Synthetic turf is actually a smart solution for overused, unsafe playing fields. And again, you can just use it every day. There would not be a day at this school you could go up there that there wouldn't be a group on it. Problem would be with literally being, running people off. Okay, versatility, it's all-weather, utility, artificial turf requires zero recovery time and is ready to go as soon as your next event is ready to start. And again, that can be multiple times a day. That could be a 7-on-7 tournament, game start at 8:00 AM and finish at 8:00 PM and you don't have to do one thing to it the entire time. Uh, field use is not restricted to athletic events. Again, I've seen the police department use it, the fire department use it, the band, et cetera. Maintenance, there's no growing required after installation. Artificial turf is ready for use. Preparation for natural grass takes, takes much longer and requires significant attention and care as the seasons change. Revenue, revenue generated can be used to offset the costs associated with field construction, sponsorships by Lincoln County businesses, and field usage fees. Okay, and there's a chart of, this is John Lenars. John did this and he actually put inflation in here. You can see on the right-hand side, the upkeep cost of annual maintenance and how it goes up by 1.5% each year. So you end up there with a 10-year total for turf at like 77,000 and for grass, 57,000. And again, the second time you did it, the turf cost would be cut in half. Final takeaway, there's no better way to be more cost-effective than that now and again. I don't think we should do this this year because times are so uncertain, but this time next year, after we have a vaccine, I certainly hope we're in a position to move forward. Summary benefits of turf versus grass, cost-effective, student-athlete safety, versatility, maintenance, potential revenue generation. The cost comparison, you can see there's only 164,000 difference over a 10-year lifespan and, you know, I've, I've done this one time, been a part of it. It's exactly how long our field lasted was 10 years. Final takeaway, you know, again, we can't do this now, but this time next year, I wanna be in a position where we have a line item in the budget, we have X number of dollars in the account. And I think that's a lot easier sale to go to a Lincoln County business. And we've already had multiple people say that they would give $25,000, they would give $10,000. We feel like we have $250,000 right now. So we'd like to be able to go to them this time next year and say, "Hey, we already have an account, we already have a line item in the budget, this is the amount that we have in there, you know, would you be willing to help us?" And at that point, I think they would. Are there any questions, anything I didn't cover? Again, I'm not trying to push this through this year because I don't think this is the right time to do it, but I do think we need to take a step forward in getting it in the budget and having a plan moving forward. And that'll be up to obviously Dr. Heath and the Board of Education, you know, whatever that number is. And I think, did you say the budget is, is that in March?
Uh, we start in February, but March is, is the hot time, yeah.
So hopefully, we can have some discussions between now and then and, uh, before that budget goes through in March, you know, look at getting a line item in the budget for football field upgrades in the future. Questions? Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Just, just a quick comment is, uh, you know, on our, uh, the facilities committee that we have, uh, the Capitals Project Committee, that is one of the items that is within that packet that you have. So, uh, you know, we'll need to see where that comes, where that falls out priority-wise and, and, uh, the board will need to have some decisions to make at that point in time, whether it's, uh, the turf field or whether it's investing in what we currently have and, and upgrading our facilities in some way or, or whatever the board decides at that point.
So we're saying we're not needing a motion entertained to, for it being a line item for the budget for the coming year? Are you gonna make that recommendation?
My thinking is that that would be discussed when we have budget meetings.
Can we not table that until our spring retreat? And then maybe that, bring it up after that?
Well, if, if that's what, you're, you're putting it, will be all put together at that time.
That's what I was thinking, yeah. And I can have it at those February.
Then we, we can, we can, we'll, we'll look at it then when. Thank y'all. Item six is approval of a contract by Pathaglot LLC for sped language services. If I, I hope I didn't butcher that too bad, uh. I don't know if that's French or Spanish.
I recommend approval.
Dr. Heath recommends approval, but if you look at it, I, I'm, is it ELA students or, I might use the wrong terminology. That's what it's contracted for, correct?
It's not for ELA. It's, is that the translation?
Yes.
The contract for Pathaglot?
Yes.
It is to translate special education documents for families who needed another language.
I got a question on that. They had a price per sheet, is that them do the first sheet or they do all the copies?
They do all of them. Is this the same contract? This'll be our third year working with this company. We've had the same contract pretty much, nothing's changed in it this year either.
Okay.
Well, let me make sure I understand your question right. If there's a three-page document and they translate it, it costs $45.
Yes.
But if they make 10 copies of it, it doesn't cost $450.
No, it's on the recording. We make the copies. They just do one translation.
Okay, that was answering my question.
I just wanna make sure that I was hearing the right question there.
Do I have a motion approved?
I told you.
Mr. Bradley got it. Mr. Tucker's second. Uh, roll call me, please, ma'am.
Mr. Posey.
Uh.
Mr. Dunn.
Aye.
Dr. Daniel.
Aye.
Mrs. King. Mrs. Haynes.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Tucker.
Aye.
Eight and zero.
Eight and zero motion carries. Next item is item seven is consider approval of building use requests listed per 3.206. Dr. Heath?
Uh, I think you have a facility usage agreement, a copy of it. Uh, Karen, is that right?
Yes, sir.
That was given out. Uh, I don't know that we have the insurance document yet.
Not yet.
We don't have that. And then the other thing would be, as a board, this is the first time.
Mr. Franklin is, is here.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Uh, as a board, this is the first time this type of organization, uh, has come asking for, uh, the use of a facility. Uh, I would think of things like AAU basketball teams that might wanna request using our facility. And so, uh, you know, I, I think that as a board, you need to look at the four levels of user and determine which level, uh, that type of organization would be. This is indoor soccer, is what this is. And I'm assuming that our students are participants. 100% of our students are participants, so, so, you know, uh, level one in the plan that you all have approved is for civic users. Level two is program partners, which are not-for-profit entities, uh, that use school facilities as primary purposes to provide programs and/or services, uh, that are designed and operated to advance the academic success of children in school. Third level is community user, which is nonprofit entities, uh, whose primary purpose is to provide programs and services that serve the local neighborhood or community, but not explicitly designed for the operate, to operate for the advancement of academic success of students. And then level four is for private users. So somewhere between level two and level three maybe, or even level, well, it wouldn't be level one, it's not a civic, uh, uh, that's like voting and community meetings and that sort of thing. But it does say informal recreation, so, uh, I don't know, as a board, uh, somewhere between civic users, program partners, and community users, and that would determine, uh, how much it would cost to use the gymnasium.
I was just looking at, we did not figure it as program partner?
Program partner and that would be $10 an hour plus optional $15 an hour if custodians need to be there, but I don't know that that would be the case in, in a situation. I'm thinking, the principal's the one who usually recommends that, that piece of it. So, uh, if, if program partners is where, uh, as a board, you say it would fit, it would be, uh, for the gymnasium, it's $10 an hour.
I'm making a motion.
Mr. Tucker makes a motion there. Mr. Bradley's second. All in.
Oh, before, before you vote now, is this gonna, I mean, you may have some questions for him, but, but we don't have the insurance yet anyway, so.
It'd be subject to. It'd make it subject to insurance.
Yeah, I'll make the motion and we'll allow them to use it for $10 an hour, but then they have to provide the insurance prior to that date.
Okay. And, and the, uh, the school-based administrators are the ones who keep up with the hours and so forth, so, okay.
Mr. Bradley's second. Any other discussion, ma'am? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose likewise?
And just a comment for you, uh, so in the future, if we get AAU teams or organizations like that, the principals will now know what you've approved and the precedent that you set, so as long as it falls under, you know, our, our students and it's a program partner.
Yeah, our students, that would be the key.
Yeah, yeah, not an outside.
Yeah, yeah. Because I mean, they could still be, fit the bill, but not be ours.
Right, then it falls down to one of those other.
Uh, next item is item eight and it's consider request to allow LCS employees who are military veterans be given Veterans Day off for the 2021-2022 school calendar year. Uh, that had been mentioned, like Mr. Posey asked for it to be brought back up. Uh, Dr. Heath, uh, any feedback?
Uh, that came out of the calendar committee, the recommendation you approve the calendar for the 21- for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year last month, and that was the recommendation of that committee, uh, and I brought that to your attention last month, and since that really wasn't part of the calendar, uh, I know Mr. Posey asked for it to be on this month's agenda, and I would, I would recommend approval.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion there.
Mr. Bradley makes a motion, but Mr. Posey's second. All in favor, please, or any discussion, any further discussion, I'm sorry, I don't get, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise? Motion carries. We appreciate those that served, or have served. Next item is consider approval of list of items from special ed and federal program departments to be declared as surplus. Uh, everybody had that list in their packet. Uh, anybody got any question, or Dr. Heath, you got any comment?
No.
Do I have a motion to prove? Mr. Tucker makes a motion. Mr. Bradley, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise? Motion carries. Eight, uh, next item is consider approval of out of adoption curriculum materials from Hylerem School to be declared as surplus. Again, that, that item was on our agenda. Uh, Dr. Heath, any?
No, I recommend approval.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Bradley makes a motion. Mr. Dunn, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise? Motion carries. Uh, Mr. Bradford with the financial reports.
Thank you, and I left my packet at the office, so luckily I had a short agenda. So, first item was one forty-one amendments, I believe we had the one to budget for the booster donor restricted donations and the sale of the lawnmower with those proceeds going back to the high, high school. And then we had a one forty-two amendment for, I think, rebudgeting some money from in-service staff development to be used to online technology learning, so if there's any questions, I'll answer them, but if not, I recommend approval of those two amendments.
Don't move.
Mr. Tucker makes a motion, second. Mr. Bradley, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise?
The next thing is the financials, um, just kind of an update, everything's still looking pretty good on our revenue estimates, expenses, so, um, I'll answer any questions, but if not, I just recommend y'all acknowledge your receipt of those financials.
Don't move.
Mr. Tucker makes a motion. Ms. King, seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise?
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. Heath, I got an email earlier, I think everybody did, there was something about Mr. Renee Pryor, and was that tonight, or did I mess that up, about a?
The budget amendment on the grant?
Yeah.
The T-PAC grant?
Is she out there?
Yes.
Is she listening? Renee, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm sorry, congratulations.
Does that need, we need to address that?
Do we need to address the budget amendment on the grant, tonight?
Okay. Do I? I can't hear you. Sit down here, we can't hear a whole lot.
I think it's priced right, come on down.
Okay. So you're talking about the Tennessee Arts Commission?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Does that need to be done tonight, is the question?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the, uh, I think it was emailed out, and, um, Jenny applied for it through the Tennessee Arts Commission. It's a five thousand dollar grant, and it's reimbursable. So Jackie was moving some money to, we have a fine arts line, and that money's gonna be there. There's no money out for the system at all, it's just that it's gotta be there in place so that when she pays for all of the, the, um, supplies and for the artist. Uh, what she's doing is, she's painting murals, uh, South Lincoln has one, there's one for pre-K, uh, the football, the, the upgrades there to the field house, there's one there, I think there's four in total that, that they are painting, and she is, she's actually commissioned, uh, three different artists to come and help with those. So most of the money, I think thirty-nine hundred dollars is really going for those artists to do the work and to, to actually draw it out and, and help paint it. Um, and then about eleven hundred dollars is for the materials and supplies. But again, it's a grant, it's reimbursable, so upfront, we're paying, and then it'll pay us back. Questions?
Have any idea what the murals are gonna look like?
Um, actually, I do not know. She, I don't, I don't have any idea, they've asked for certain, um, well, I will say that they want words of, you know, kindness and, and that type of thing, so I do know that's kind of the theme, is that they're looking at, um, you know, at character in, in most of these. But each one, I actually have that, but, um, as part of her grant, um, that each person, each group asks for something a little different, but inspiration.
Anybody else got anything to ask Mr. Nate for?
Well, the question might be for Cole even, what does this, what does the motion need to say? We're moving money or we're?
I think Renee, just to approve the grant.
Yeah.
Okay, and then he'll come back with the amendment when, when needed.
Do I have a motion to approve the grant for the Tennessee Art, is Tennessee Art Grant?
It's Tennessee Art Commission.
Tennessee Art Commission.
And Jenny Rolls is in, in charge of it, I mean, it's going through her and.
Mr. Tucker makes a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Bradley, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise? Motion carries. Thank you. Did I miss any, is anything else I missed?
I don't think so. Good point. Point of information is next, I think.
The first one on points of information is set goals for director to be used in evaluation. Uh, Dr. Heath and I discussed those days, I mean, unless somebody can think something in the COVID era that, other than survive and get through back sound and solid, I can't, academic-wise, I, I mean, I, I don't know of anything unless any board member's got anything that they would like to incorporate, you can email me that, and, uh, we can incorporate that in, but other, I, I don't know anything in this environment.
Well, testing is not gonna be happening this year, and then of course, it didn't happen last year, or at least it won't count this year, so, uh, our academic standing has been the highest in South Central, but we're not gonna be able to know where we are this year or last year, really. Uh, so, you know, academically, we, you know, we're, we're, we're moving right along, and I think we're doing as well, if not better than anybody I know of for our kids right now, uh, and, and so, but that goes back to handling COVID and COVID issues, so, and that's what most administrators, including myself, are spending most of our time doing, uh, on a daily basis.
And I think coupled with financial-wise, those are the two points, and we're, we're on, we're trying to mitigate as much expense as we can in, in going through with our budget. So if anybody has any recommendations for an evaluation, uh, let, let us know, otherwise we'll, we'll go with our parameters like we've got. Uh, next item is, uh, we'll receive the strategic plan from previous years for review, is that, that's in the drive, correct?
Should be. Get out of the chair.
Uh, and, and what we'll do administratively, we'll, we'll take a look at that between now and the February retreat, because that's really when, as a board, uh, we like to, we like to discuss it and see what changes you would like to make, because really and truly, administratively, we can put the, all the plans together, but it, it's a board's plan, so, uh, we'll have it there that day.
And again, in light of COVID, uh, the January meeting was to have taken place at Flintville, but we'll, we'll come back to LCA unless there's somebody dead set, wanting them to have to set up the gymnasium for us, and I'd, I'd hate them to have to go up to that trouble. So we'll, we'll come back to here at the January meeting. Uh, next thing is, uh, everybody's got a copy of their TSBA transcript, if you would proof that over for any errors that there could be, or levels that you can attain and get Miss Karen on that. Uh, the last thing is, uh, if y'all would, I've got one director's evaluation, if you would get them to me between now and January fifth or so, or about, or the next board meeting, uh, that'd be helpful for, to put that together. Uh, Dr. Heath, have you got anything else?
No, I do not.
Well, the last thing I've gone on here is, everybody I hope has a Merry Christmas, and a, hopefully a Happy New Year going forward.
Miss Karen worked on this really hard, she wanted you to tell everybody to make sure that you looked at it.
Oh, I did, I did, everybody did. Uh, but, uh, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and hope everybody can stay well and avoid the COVID. And anybody got anything else other than a motion to adjourn?
Well, Kate said her computer went off, so she hasn't been able to get back on.
Oh, I'm.
She on?
She's gone. We lost one tonight.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, about this time every year, we have to have a discussion about the January meeting because of college football playoffs, is that an issue for you this year?
Hey, you know.
It could be, couldn't it?
It, it could be, but you know, I think I can relish and get there in time, and it'd be a good night for all.
All right.
I appreciate you thinking of that.
It seems like every year we have to talk about it, you know?
Well, I mean, Coach Rose had mentioned that, but you know, I, unless they've changed it, University of Alabama still has our, the natural grass.
Okay.
I mean, ju- just checking there, now, it may have changed in the last while, but I think it's natural grass. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Mr. Tucker.
Second.
Mr. Bradley, second. All in favor, please say aye. Pose likewise? We're done.
Never heard anybody do a.